Okay, I'd like to call the planning board meeting to order. Stephanie, could you please read the other confirmation?
Yep. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30a, section 18, the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, and the governor's August 11, 2020 COVID-19 order number 46, this meeting of the City of Leominster Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Hey, John, I don't know if you want to deal with this now or not, but the governor's order ends May the 29th now.
Yeah.
So what is that going to mean for us going forward? Our next meeting will still be remote, won't be remote since the order.
As of right now, our next meeting will probably still be remote because we had to advertise for a public hearing.
Gotcha.
I'll speak to city clerk to see how they're going to proceed, and then I'll fill you guys in at the next meeting.
Wonderful.
Great. Because the emergency order is lifted on June.
No, I thought it was earlier, today he moved it up.
Well, he moved the, he moved the 100% capacity up to the 29th, you know, for vax and, so, and all the music venues and restaurants. Oh. That order, and then the order expires on the 15th, the state emergency. But I don't know what that means, you know, I don't know what that means to us. But that's the way I saw it today.
Yeah.
Do you have guidance on the courts?
We can be, we can be full staff as of Memorial Day weekend, the Monday, the Tuesday after. We're full staff and. And, and we have a certain limit in the number of people in the building, I don't know if that's going to change in terms of the public. But my suggestion is, I mean, I don't know, I guess it depends upon how far out we've advertised, if we're already booked in June as being via Zoom per the publications or, and advising people, we only have one meeting in July and August, I just assume we start fresh in September.
Okay.
You can wait, I mean, if other, if other municipality boards are meeting before then, I, you know, we should follow.
Well, it all depends what the governor says, whether we can or not, it's all in the open meeting law.
Yeah, but I thought, I thought now we could have so many people in, I guess it depends upon how many people we can have in, in, in room 10.
Right.
And if we, then otherwise, we have to find another venue, the library or something, then we have to determine, because I thought we could have up to X number of people indoors now.
That's going to change, Carol, to 100% as of Memorial Day 29.
Yeah. But if we're already, if we're already scheduled in June as via Zoom, we should keep it that way, then I guess we'll have to see going forward for July and August.
Hey, hey, carry with me.
I'll get a consensus on what the other boards are doing as well.
Yeah, the fight on film city. I'm sure she'll have the latest updates.
Yep.
Okay. I actually. We'll start the meeting, the planning board meeting in May 17, 2020, 6:30, the roll call, please.
John Souza.
Yeah.
Carol Vittorioso.
Here.
Salvatore Cconi.
Yeah.
Thomas Kerrigan. Absent, Patrick Perla.
Here.
Paul Weiser.
Here.
Jason Parry. Dean Valier.
Here.
Seven members are present, and for the record, we are recording.
Okay, fine, thank you. We have no scheduled hearings. We'll run on to the regular meeting. We've just had a roll call, so I don't think I need another one. It's a call to order, minutes of previous meetings.
I wasn't present, so I abstained on April 5.
I move, we approve the April 5 meeting minutes, this is Paul.
Second.
Second, we approve the April 15.
April 5.
Meetings, minutes, any additions, deletions, or corrections? Karen, I'll call the roll call.
John Souza.
Yeah.
Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
Salvatore Cconi.
Yes.
Thomas Kerrigan, absent, Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Jason Parry.
Yeah.
Dean Valier.
Yes, thank you.
I actually abstain.
Carol abstained.
I just, I said yes, so I wrote.
And, and we also, for Dean, wasn't there as well, but he signed the affidavit acknowledging watching the meeting.
Okay, so he's okay.
Which is generally agreeable, Carol.
Okay. Plans submitted, we don't have any. We are going to have the new plans for the police station, that's coming up shortly. And I think there's another, there's another plan, there's got to be a plan for, for a marijuana facility. I'll just let you know, there's some things coming down the pipe. Old business, don't have any, new business, I like these. Communications. Special permit extension request received 5321 for 449 Wachusett Street, off-site solar system, special permit for use, application number six in 2019, stamped and approved and given on 8/219, planning board to make determination, is warranted, and vote accordingly. What we have found here is that the state or the governor has given this a, automatically a 502 or three-day extension. Okay? What they're asking for is two, two years. That be, that would be within the 500 days anyway, so we can do, we can do the two years and, and then we'll just cover it. I guess there are some issues with the power company.
And John, Sunken is also on the line, if you would allow them to comment.
Okay.
George John and Stephanie, that about summed it up, you know, we're, we're working in good faith with the utility and the state and, and everybody involved in getting these, you know, this is among quite a few projects that we have, and quite a few of them in the area are running into lengthy, you know, delays with COVID, but also just, you know, an aging infrastructure that needs to be updated, so everybody's, you know, trying to come together to figure out, you know, I believe so a substation may need to be built, or, you know, I guess a few in the general area, so that's kind of what's, what's holding things up, and there's been various studies, and we're currently under a study right now, so.
Okay. Is there any idea that you, any indication they've given you on, they have a plan at all?
They being, I guess it depends on who they, so if national, national grid is, is running what's called group studies, I think this latest round of group study, which basically is studying a number of projects together that are impacting the similar, you know, substation, the same substation, that should be done in November, but there's an issue on top of that where, you know, a lot of these, you know, a lot of what's happening is on an old infrastructure that, you know, additional development may need to be done, I think that's what they're studying as well, and some of these costs that are coming back for interconnecting are cost prohibitive for a lot of these projects, so likely something will have to be done on a regulatory aspect, that's why, you know, there could be potential more delay than just November, I guess, and, and we really just have to wait and see, we don't have any control over this at this time.
Okay.
And they're doing a study on you guys to see if this project is one of the projects that may be viable or, or a cost prohibitive?
Yes, so they're, they're doing the study on all the projects, and, you know, there's, what the study, what the study will come back and, and say is, is a number, right? How much would it cost for the necessary infrastructure to be built for this project to go online, right? But then there's an added question on top of that, and this is where we'll, you know, just to let you guys all know exactly what's happening on the state level, is likely we'll have to be a question as to the state's goals, as to renewables, and, you know, what they want to come online, and then, you know, who and how can these projects get built effectively based on the costs that need to be brought on, you know, on the grid, and sorry for the lack of better terminology there, but essentially there's, some of these projects aren't going to be financeable if they come back with, you know, $10 million interconnection upgrades, and so we don't yet, but we've seen that on one of the projects of our projects so far, and so right now, it's just a question, and it's not just us, right? We're talking with other developers and, and, and the industry, you know, SIA, which is the, this solar industry group, and, you know, there's likely something will have to be done on the, on the state level, it seems, but I don't really know exactly what's going to happen yet, and we're still trying to, you know, get a lay of the land, so the additional time will help, hopefully, you know, us and, you know, navigate that.
Is this land, land mounted in the roof?
This is between Wachusett Street and those.
Yeah, no, no, is it?
Oh, these are the larger projects to get on.
The larger projects, or is it just the roof projects, or?
No.
Just solar in general?
Okay, yes, I think it's, it's mostly part of solar in general, but the, the distributed energy, which is the five mega, you know, probably between one megawatt and five megawatts, so between, you know, five acres and 25 acres or so. And they're essentially studying the impacts of those on, on the grid, and, and it's also, I think, there's not as much load probably out in, in some of these rural areas where a lot of, you know, developers have come in, so I think it's just, it's a new thing that the, the national grid needs to, you know, get a handle on still. And that's, I guess that's, that's my two cents, and I just want to give you guys, you know, a full view from, from our end, so that you guys understand kind of what's happening as well.
No. Information, I, you know, everybody's saying we've got to go solar, got to go solar, but I've, I've heard the, not the opposite, but I've also heard, you know, that there's a lot of problems with the grid, so, you know, you're verifying what I've heard before.
Yeah, exactly, so, you know, we're, we, we're confident in moving forward, you know, with, with all of our projects in Massachusetts, but, and, and it's not just a Massachusetts problem, it's really just, it's everywhere, you know, and, and how to best utilize that, and one nice thing about the SMART program is there, you know, they are, you know, forward thinking and looking at storage and some, some, you know, various things, so, but yeah, I'm not a policy person really or anything, but that's just kind of where everything, you know, that I'm seeing on my end.
Yeah.
The extension request right now is, when does it expire?
Well, the motion would be for two years.
No, I, no, I know, John, I says, when is it expiring now?
I think it expires now, if I'm not mistaken, August 2, 2021, so it would be two years from then is what we would be requesting, is that?
So would you know more from the regulatory body before, you know, let's say we extend it, you know, and get it, you know, for six months or a year, and then get a report back from you guys as to where things stand and what's going on, and.
We don't have to.
If we extend it again.
Okay, Sal.
What I would say is, if, if you guys are, if the board was amenable, we would request to have the two years, and then, you know, it's in our best interest to get this built as soon as possible, and maybe I could, you know, if we hear anything, I can send the board or Stephanie an update on anything that, that we, that we hear, and, you know, if, if the board were, you know, and anyone that wants to see, you know, feel free to reach out to your legislators and, and whatnot as well, but, but yeah, this is, you know, we're, we're moving forward, and I'm happy to provide updates whenever we have additional information.
So, basically, all we're doing is giving a six-month extension, because already the state is giving.
Oh, I see, I see.
500.
Okay.
Right.
So our extension is really only six months on top of that.
Understood, okay.
Okay, wrong figures.
Yeah, but maybe, like, a report, maybe we should make a caveat to this to get a six-month update, or, you know, if something happens sooner, to come in and give us an update sooner if that's the case, you know?
You can, you can make that part of the motion, Sal, if you want.
Yeah, I would like that, I want to see where this thing is going too.
Yeah, that's fine, we're happy to be transparent and whatnot, however you guys want to do it.
Okay.
I second the motion.
Okay. I have a, have a motion that's from Sal to, for the two years for the six-year, six-month
Review.
And, and this one is for the special permit application number six in 2019.
Right.
Correct, yep, and I, and I guess we'll be doing it on the next one as well, right?
Correct.
On application number seven.
It was a motion.
So we can, you want to combine 6.162?
No, we can't.
You can't, you can't.
Yeah.
All right, we got to do one at a time then.
Do one at a time.
Yep.
Do I have, do I have any further discussion, I have a motion, I have a second, do I have any further discussion?
Just for the record, I reached out to the department heads to see if they had any additional comment, and I only heard back from conservation, and they were 100% support of the extension.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll call for the roll call.
John Souza.
Yes.
Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
Salvatore Cconi.
Yes.
Thomas Kerrigan, absent, Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Jason Parry. Dean Valier. Dean, are you there?
Dean?
Can we?
Oh, I can hear you now.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
That's a vote of 7-0.
Okay, 6.2, special permit extension request received 5321 for 449 Wachusett Street, off-site solar system, special permit for the water supply protection district, application number seven in 2019, stamped approval given on 8/219, planning board to make determination, the extension is warranted and vote accordingly. Okay? Sal, you want to make the same motion?
I'll make the same motion, move with the same motion with a six-month report or communication. Second.
Okay, it's a two, two year extension with a six-month report.
Review. Or sooner, if, if, if something is known, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
George, so, do you, just to clarify, six months from now, you want to, us to follow up, or you guys can follow up as well if, if we have any additional information, is that what?
Be a letter or a note, an email, just ahead.
Or get on, get on the meeting agenda, so if we have questions, just, just to see what's going on, if something, if there are changes in six months, even if there aren't, you know, we can just, you know, it stayed the same, or this is right now, that type of, so, you know, get on the calendar and, and come under communications, and we'll talk about it for five minutes.
Perfect, yeah, that's, that's fine, I will, I'll put it on the calendar, on my calendar, and we'll, we'll reach back out and hopefully have some, you know, for everybody's sake, have some additional information by then.
And, and let the planning office know what the, what the date is on that as well.
Okay. I have a motion made and seconded, do I have a second on this one?
That did. Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Real quick, will this, what documentation will, how, how are we, how are you guys documenting the, the extension, is, is it through the minutes, or is there a, a paper that will, or an email?
Stephanie send out a, a new date.
Yeah, we'll be providing another notice of decision explaining the extension, and it will be stamped in with city clerk as official and provided to you.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate it, thank you for everyone's time.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll call for the roll call.
John Souza.
Yeah.
Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
Salvatore Cconi.
Yes.
Thomas Kerrigan, absent, Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Jason Parry. Dean Valier.
Yes.
That's 7-0.
Yes, thank you. My motion carries. 6.3, on a site plan approval modification received on 5/10/21 for 143 Mill Street, and by planning board on 5/321, planning board meeting, stamped approved on 5/10/21, request to plan board review and make a motion accordingly. What's happened here is they've made a few minor changes, and we've determined that it was a minor modification, and to bring it forward on tonight's meeting, so do I have a representative?
You do, my name is Scott Rogers from JK Home Engineering.
Okay, Scott.
All right, let me go through those minor modifications that you highlighted there. With me tonight is also Doug Valery from Enterprise Rent-A-Car. So one of the comments that was raised during our site plan approval and special permit was the snow storage mislabeling, we took care of that.
Steph? Could you either bring up the?
Yeah, can we put up a plan?
Give him control of the screen?
Of course. Scott, I'm going to give you control, okay?
Yep.
Okay, you should be able to share your screen now. We can see that.
Okay. So the snow storage area was, was revised based on our discussions at the last hearings, that was the area behind the building, we also added some snow storage areas along Cinema Drive, and we added a note, basically talked about, if you have a, I know, a snowstorm or a high frequency wintertime, you'd basically be having to remove snow off the site to keep the site distances at the entranceway safe and all that. The old plan showed on this particular plan, a couple of cars right in front of the building as display, the client wanted to remove those, so those were taken off the plan. The employee spaces we had originally shown on the left-hand side over here, on the left side of Cinema Drive, if you will, we basically moved those employee spaces to pretty much the further spaces on the lot, which would be down here by, by Cinema Drive, that area right there. This would allow us to have, you know, more space up in front of the building for customers, ADA spaces, stuff like that. So one of the things that was added that I frankly missed on the plan that was, the architectural plans was the back of the building, there's going to be two overhead doors on that particular area, one will be an overhead door basically for cars, and one will be for trucks, side by side.
This is not a garage though, right, still not operating maintenance garage for these.
Still not a garage, we talked about last time, it's basically, you know, wiper blades maybe, and filling up air and tires, but no oil changes, no auto body, none of that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
You know, if you probably remember back, the original plan that we submitted had, I believe, 106 cars, the plan that we submitted in the middle process, if you will, when we added the trucks, had 80 spaces, I believe, and now we're down to about a little less than 60 at 59, so I guess from, from that perspective, we're going kind of in the right direction, less cars on the, on the property.
Okay.
And then last but not least, the landscaped island that we had kind of in the center of the parking lot, that was shifted over more towards the corner of Cinema Drive, the square foot, square foot area of the island didn't actually change, and the plantings within the island, we had two, I believe there were red maples planted in there, those didn't change either, but we did, we did want to relocate that island, it was important, and you'll notice as well that we added a return lane, which is located between the building spaces in this area over here, so we felt with, you know, a truck maybe and a couple of cars, we needed a good area to swing around to get into the back of a building, so. Those are basically the changes, if you have any questions, I'd love to answer those.
No, they look good to me. Have you had any questions to comment to the board?
I did reach out to the building department a couple times, and they didn't reply back with any comment in regards to the changes.
Okay.
And also, Scott did provide the snow storage area, which was a condition of approval on the previous site plan.
Right.
So that was good.
That's done, so he's up to date. Need any changes? Do I have any additional questions or comments?
So I, I have to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to say, I have to abstain because I wasn't here for the full hearing, I didn't watch it, but I just did have a question, which I'm sure came up, is this, is this in addition to the current location, or are you completely relocating?
I believe this would be a replacement to the existing one, the other one's smaller than this one, this one's a little bit larger.
Okay, so I'm just wondering, okay, I just, that's just for my own personal information. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Very good, do I have any other? I make it, open it for comments, if there's anyone else out there wants to comment. Okay, here and then, do I have a motion?
Well, can I, can you just highlight the snow storage for me again, please?
Sure, so the snow storage area is up here on this side over here, and then we added a snow storage to this, I'm going to call it an L-shaped island along Mill Street and Cinema Drive.
And you have it listed on the map, is that T?
Yeah, I believe it's listed as T.
Yeah, I mean, I'm trying to, I, you know, I think my, my map is old, but I do see the T, yeah.
And then we added that snow storage note, which is basically on this side of the, the right-hand side of the plan, right underneath the zoning table. Send a special note?
Yep. Yep, I see it, thank you.
Sure.
Okay.
I was wondering if I had the right map, that's all, or if my eyes were going again.
I won't comment down there.
Yeah, I can't comment either. Carol, smile.
Okay, a motion would. Sal, you making a?
Well, we have to, you have to vote that it's a minor site plan versus major first?
Yes, we do.
I'll make that motion, that is, it is a minor site plan.
I'll second that, that's Paul.
I have a motion made and seconded to classify this a minor, a minor modification, any further discussion? Here and then, I'll call for the, roll call, please.
John Souza.
Yes.
Carol Vittorioso. Absent.
Absent.
Salvatore Cconi.
Yes.
Thomas Kerrigan, absent, Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Jason Parry. Dean Valier.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. 6.4, planning board recommendation to city council petition 70-21. Angela Chupski?
You still have to vote on the approval.
Yeah, you have to vote on, on the approval.
I'm sorry.
There you go.
On the approval, on the minor modification. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
And again, second.
Motion made and seconded. Do I have a, a roll call, please?
John Souza.
Yes.
Carol Vittorioso.
Stained, but I like it.
Salvatore Cconi.
Yes.
Thomas Kerrigan, absent, Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Jason Parry. Dean Valier.
Dean?
Dean?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, Scott, if you can just relinquish control.
Yep, thank you very much, everyone.
Good idea. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Six point four. Plan a board recommendation of a city council petition uh, seventy that twenty-one Angela. Chupski. Conservation agent request to amend chapter twenty-one of revised ordinance entitled water and sewers. Article uh, six stormwater and erosion control regulations. And stormwater ordinance by inserting new definitions and updating the language as attached. Uh, we've gotten the the whole thing, I've gone through it. Um. Pretty much, this is all uh. Conservation uh, bailiwick, which we don't get too much involved. Uh, one thing I did notice. Uh, that in here, they they they're asking for uh, final documentation. Um. And the as-built. Uh, which we request, but now they're also requesting it. And what's kind of, they also added here. That they're asking for a uh, a disk. Uh, with the drawings on it. So, um. That's what we don't have, so maybe that's something that will make a change to a, to our subdivision regulations later on.
I think that would be a good idea, get us in the uh, maybe the twentieth century, you know?
That brings up.
That would be a fantastic idea, boy.
Really would.
No, nobody uses.
I'm just gonna, how about just a digital download?
Seriously, no, nobody uses discs, that'll be.
I know it.
You're you're not going to have machines that'll be able to read discs.
That's right, it's gonna be like your VHS.
I mean, I.
Eight-track.
We we should not adapt, we should not adopt discs as the uh.
Not discs, just digital.
Digital, physical downloads.
digitally, you know. And the digital. Something.
Yeah, because the uh, I don't know, could be a stick, I don't know.
A lot of people have been putting them in one drives or Google drives.
Right, yeah.
And so. So we can look at that, but that's what they called for, and I said, I don't have a problem with that. And uh, and I thought it was a good idea and something that we can. Just put in the back of our minds and when one of these days when we're doing an update on the subdivision. Regulations, we can add it. Other than that, I was okay with it. Anybody else have any comments?
Nothing.
Um, except, do you know if this was um, approved by, this is by the city solicitor?
Um, I do not know that.
Well.
I know it was.
That the city council would have, anything, Carol, anything that will go to the city council. And before it gets final approval, uh, they refer everything to the city solicitor.
Okay, well, I would.
Admit, of course.
And, okay.
Yeah, stick it in there.
And so if 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 we're ready for a motion, I make a motion to recommend approval upon the approval of the. City solicitor. If if the city council chooses to seek their advice.
Say it.
I have a motion made and seconded, do I have any further discussion?
Can you make a motion that's twice conditional?
That's the, yeah, go ahead, that's part of the discussion.
Yes.
Well, no, I'm just, I mean.
Did you want to, oh, why?
The motion is, subject to approval if they so desire.
Well, I don't think it's up to, well, I guess then I'll, I see your point, Paul, I guess, because I'm thinking it's not up to us for them to seek.
Right.
Then I, then I'll just say, um, subject to the approval of uh, KP Law, and if they don't do it, they don't.
Right, that's up to them.
Yeah.
We're we're just making a recommendation anyway.
Yep.
They can disregard it.
Yep. It's a good one, Paul.
Thanks, Paul. And I'm, I'm, I'm just being agreeable.
That's it, yes.
Who, you? I can't believe it.
Okay. Uh, call for the, any further discussion? Call for the roll call.
John Souza.
Yes.
Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
Salvatore Chaconi.
Yes.
Thomas Kerrigan absent, Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Wiser.
Yes.
Jason Paray. Dean Valier.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, this next one is request what what and just to give uh, Stephanie signature authority in case uh. Well, we had put this in before, uh, just to let you know that uh. Elizabeth is coming, we think is coming back tomorrow. Okay, but we had put in a number of things just in case. Uh, something should arise again in the future that we can continue proceeding. Uh, efficiently. So that's why one of the last things we had to do was to give uh, Stephanie signature authority. Uh, when Elizabeth and myself uh, not available.
Yes, I will make that motion if you're looking for one.
Second.
I haven't made your motion made and seconded, do I have any discussion? Here and then I'll call for the vote, roll call please.
John Souza.
Yes.
Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
Salvatore Chaconi.
Yes, yes.
Thomas Kerrigan absent, Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Wiser.
Yes.
Jason Paray.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll work with the registry of deeds on that.
Yes, it sounds like a dog box.
What?
I don't know, my my computer would, Jason, say yes. Yeah. There's a noise that comes in just before you say something.
Well, that's him taking it off mute.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, director's report.
All I was gonna mention was that Elizabeth is coming back, so she'll be taking over the next um, Zoom meeting in June.
Yeah, and she's.
You're gonna miss this stuff.
No comment.
Yeah, I'll do, you know, Stephanie really stepped up to the plate.
Did a great job.
And the recognition, uh, you know, the mayor's recognized it, the HR's recognized, you know. Everybody just amazed that we got through this whole thing without any uh, without any hiccups at all, so uh. You know, and she's ninety-nine percent uh, responsible for that.
That's right.
Thank you.
I'm stuff, great.
We got that, uh.
We're gonna get, we're gonna give you, we're gonna appropriate an extra couple of weeks vacation for you. I would love to, I'd give that away in a second for you. I would.
Sal's announcing his mayoral campaign today, good.
There you go, because because you can run from out of town, you know. You just have to be there, what, within a month, thirty days, once you get elected, you have thirty, ninety days to move in.
Well, remember, remember that when the bu- the fiscal year twenty-two budget comes out.
Yes.
There you go.
Yeah. That's a excellent.
And we're gonna get a raise too, I'm gonna give us all a raise.
Now, you're gonna move into town to run, right?
No.
We're gonna have, we're gonna.
You have to, you have to move into town if you win.
Okay.
You know, I have a house on your your street, I live there anyway, so what's the, what's the deal? You know?
Yeah, well, it's Ward one that's open, it's gonna be.
I don't, you know, I don't know if, I don't know if I I have the time.
You know, I do have.
Busy. I got a fly fishing trip coming up in in another week, you know, I I, you know, I'm busy right now.
Okay, how's mom and dad doing?
No, it's a circus, it's a circus over there.
We should, we should adjourn and stop recording before you have that.
Yeah, yeah, you better.
Will I make a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, motion to adjourn.
Okay, I have a motion to adjourn. I have a second.
Pat, I guess that's you.
I heard.
I'm too young, I can't, I'm not even allowed.
You're too young, you're too young.
I heard Jason second.
All right.
Roll call please.
Few more years, Brad.
Yes.
Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
Salvatore Chaconi.
Yes.
Thomas Kerrigan absent. Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Wiser.
Yes.
Jason Paray. Dean Valier.
Yes.